My name is Dick Downey, and I shall be your moderator this evening. The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, and don't pay attention to that clock over there. A quorum is present, so I call this FY 2025 Annual Town Meeting to order. For those of you who wish to celebrate our democracy and freedoms, please stand with me to the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag on your left. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we start the proceedings this evening, I would like to spend a few minutes to kind of go over the ground rules for tonight's meeting. Per Section 2.2 of the Charter, I am required to appoint a deputy moderator who shall complete the town meeting should I become unable to continue. Therefore, I appoint Mr. William Coleman as deputy moderator. This appointment needs ratification by the town meeting, so all of those in favor of William Coleman as deputy moderator, please raise your ballot. Okay, all those opposed. Your Assistant Deputy Moderator, Mr. Coleman. Thank you. Per the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, there is no smoking on school property or any of the grounds. Please take a moment, and I shall do it myself, right now, to turn off or put on vibrate all of your cell phones or any other electronic devices as courtesy to your fellow residents. We have some non-residents guests with us this evening. If there are no valid objections, we'll be allowed to remain, but in no case will they be allowed to vote. They are asked to sit in the assigned area here to my left in the first several rows, and they are wearing an identification tag. Guests may be allowed to speak, but only if requested by a town official, and only to provide information, not opinions. The town clerk is required to provide the Attorney General's office with detailed notes on every article and person who speaks at this meeting. Therefore, I ask that you clearly state your name and street address each time that you speak. There are microphones at the front of each aisle. Please line up behind the microphone closest to you, and I will call upon you when it's your turn to speak. Since everything is being recorded, I may ask you to start over if we cannot hear or understand you. You might consider closing up close to the microphone when you speak so that we can hear you easily. Please address all questions to me, the moderator, and I will assign somebody to answer. If you have more than one question or statement to make, please go to the rear of the line for your next question in order that I can get as many people as possible a chance to speak. And depending on your answer that you receive, I may allow one follow-up question. My job is to balance the best flow of new information for voters to evaluate while keeping the meeting just as efficient as possible. Therefore, it's important that you make your point concisely and to stay on topic. If I feel that no new information is being presented, I shall then call for the vote. Our Constitution gives us the right to make our opinions known and ask questions, and in fact, I encourage you all to do so. However, that does not give anyone the right to be disrespectful to other audience members or to town officials. Should I feel this is happening, I shall ask that person to stop speaking and to take their seat. Likewise, this is a legislative body, and it should be thoughtful. Please do not cheer, boo, et cetera. Actually listen to what each person has to say before you make your final decision. We are one community after all. Per mained town bylaws, Section 14, a secret ballot vote shall be taken for any article or amendment concerning these topics: wages, benefits, or conditions of employment of a town employee or officer; the acquisition, sale, or lease of real estate; borrowing; authorization for expenditures equal to or greater than a tenth of a percent of last year's budget, which translates to $54,500; or zoning articles. Each person should have a tablet of ballots. Tonight's starting number is seven. Please check your ballots now to make sure it starts with seven. If not, please go out and get it reconciled with the town clerk's personnel. When I call for a hand vote, please raise your hand with your ballot book so that I can see it. Also, to facilitate the counting of secret ballots, please do not fold your ballot. It slows everything down. Simply hold it upside down and then drop it into the collection box. I shall call for an article. The individual from the sponsoring organization will move that article. All articles have been given to us previously by the town clerk, to the town clerk. Any article moved differently must be given to me in writing. I shall only read an article if it's moved differently than that printed in the warrant. For lengthy articles, I'll give a brief summary of the article. An amendment to an article must be given to me in writing, and it must include the sponsor's name. It will then be reviewed by town council and the moderator to see that the language meets the criteria for the Attorney General's acceptance. There may be an occasional time when an amendment cannot be accepted, such as an expansion of scope or a conflicting state statute. To make an amendment, raise your hand with your ballot and be recognized and state that you wish to make an amendment. For your convenience, there is an amendment form in the lobby. I shall ask that you state the amendment and ask for a second. If there's no second, I cannot accept the amendment. If I do, if it is accepted and the scope and legality of the amendment is appropriate, I will then ask you to bring up the filled-out amendment form to me. Once I receive the amendment, I shall read the amendment, and expect this process to take several minutes. If you'll open your warrant, you'll find that there is reference informations on pages two, three, and four. So, tonight, we have eighteen articles that require a secret ballot. Assuming that each vote will take five minutes, that means that we'll spend ninety minutes just voting. I have come up with a plan to reduce the dead time of collecting and counting the ballots. I plan to have this with thirteen secret ballots, or about sixty-five minutes of voting, saving us about twenty-five minutes overall. Well, I shall move and discuss the articles at normal, but hold the vote until later. After a group of articles of similar passage requirements, I shall call for one vote for several articles. If the vote passes, I shall move on. If it does not pass, I shall be unable to declare which items passed and which failed, so we'll have to go back and vote them separately. Following that thought, I've had feedback, both pro and con, on this approach of discussing like subjects and voting things together. The benefit is that we save ten minutes of dead time, twenty-five minutes of dead time, and on the other hand, the downside is that people don't get to vote on split articles. If they wanted a yes on one and a no on the other, it makes it very difficult. So if we go with my plan, it needs a ratification of the town. So I would like to get your sense then and a vote. All of those people who would like to vote separately and do a separate vote on each and every article, please raise your ballot now. Okay, all those who would like to go with the plan where I combine things and we reduce the number of votes, please raise your ballots. Okay, so that motion to take my plan is passed. So we begin the proceedings, but first, we'd like the selectman to give a few words. Mrs. De Silva?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's a recognition from some people in town who've done some great things in the past year and past years. The Select Board, Finance Committee, and School Committee appreciate the time offered by the town moderator, recognize a few people who have been instrumental in the success of the town. These individuals are nominated and evaluated according to the following criteria: exceptional managerial, organizational, and/or communications achievements; achievement of significant improvements in productivity and/or cost savings in department operations, and other factors that represent outstanding work in their discipline. Tonight, the boards of the Select Board, the Finance Committee, and School Committee would like to recognize Bill Nemzner, Town's Planning Director; Jean LaBelle Pierce of the Maynard Public Schools; Jean McGuire, our Library Director; and Bill Coleman for his work with the Town Charter Review Committee. Please join us in applauding these awardees.
If they're here, could they stand up so that we can see who you are? Thank you very much, and congratulations. Would the Chair of the Charter Commission please give their report?
Bill Coleman, Maynard Charter Review Committee, Final Report. On behalf of the Charter Review Committee, I'd like to thank the voters of Maynard for approving the revised charter at the town election. The revised charter is now in effect and is posted on the town website. I would personally like, I would like to personally thank my fellow committee members: Jeff Swanberg, Natasha Rivera, Sally Bubier, William Cranshaw, Peter Campbell, Luanne Kataya, Brendan Chetwith. With the approval of the revised charter, the committee's work is done. So with no objection of the committee, I hereby dissolve the Charter Review Committee.
Okay, thank you very much. Would the selectman please move the first article?
Are these the copies I'm going to present to the clerk?
They've already been presented.
All right, so we don't need to walk it across?
Correct.
All right. Article one, this evening's town meeting. I move to act, I move to approve Article one as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Okay, Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee Recommends.
Mr. De Silva.
Okay, Article one is acceptance of the town report, nope, we did that one. Annual procedural article to accept reports from various town committees, and the town's annual report is the specific report proposed for this acceptance.
And also included in this is the Charter Commission's report, which we just received, is the final report, which now closes out that committee's operations, and so it's complete. No discussion, all those in favor, please raise your ballot. Thank you. All those opposed, motion carries. Article two.
Article two, obsolete equipment and material. I move to approve Article two as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee Recommends.
Okay, Article two is another annual article which allows the town to sell or dispose of surplus equipment, if any, in accordance with state law.
Discussion. All those in favor, please raise your ballot. Thank you. All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Article three.
Okay, Article three is the Authorization Revolving Funds, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E., one slash two, and I move to approve Article three as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
And I have the Finance Committee Recommendation.
Finance Committee Recommends.
Okay, I'm going to hold discussion and presentation so that we can do three articles as one vote, and then we'll discuss them all together. So would you please move Article four?
Article four is Certified Free Cash Appropriation for Fiscal Year 2024. I move to approve Article four as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee Recommendation?
Finance Committee Recommends.
Okay, would you please move Article five?
Article five is the Fiscal Year 2025 Salary Administration Plan, and I move to approve Article five as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee Recommendation?
Finance Committee Recommends.
Okay, and Mr. De Silva, would you give us a presentation on Article three, please?
All right, Article three is the Authorization of the Town's Revolving Funds, and there's a list of them. I can read through them if you'd like. Conservation Commission Wetlands and Bylaw Consultant Fees, $25,000. Planning Board Site Plan Review, $25,000. Disposal/Drop Off Center, $15,000. Board of Health Licensing Fees, $25,000. Council on Aging COA Van Service, $85,000. Sealer of Waits and Measures, $5,000. Electrical Wiring Inspection Services, $65,000. Plumbing and Gas Inspection Services, $60,000. Municipal Permitting, $40,000. Recreation, $20,000. Any electric vehicle charging stations, $35,000. Those are the revolving funds for 2025.
Okay, would you give your presentations for Article four, please?
Sure. This, this motion is the Certified Free Cash, and the list of proposed appropriations follows the town's capital planning committee's prioritizations and addresses the operational needs of the town. The total of the appropriation is $1,369,974 as follows. Snow and Ice Deficit, $300,000. Our Capitalization Stabilization Fund, $110,880. General Stabilization Fund, $50,000. OPEB or Other Post-Employee Benefits Fund, $25,000. Alumni Bleacher Planning and Design, $55,000. Alumni Bleacher Rentals, $50,000. COVID-19 FEMA Fund, $28,734. Police Cruisers, $110,000. Fire Alarm Radio Monitoring System, $40,000. Fire Personal Protection Safety Equipment, $40,000. School Facilities, Envelope and Roof Repairs, $60,000. Library Stairwell Repairs, $50,000. And Route 27 Intersection Improvements, $450,360, which are the lights that will soon be installed at the intersection of Concord and Brown and Acton Streets.
And Article five.
Article five. This is a, this is the Salary Administration Plan. This is an annual procedural article to make adjustments to the salary table and other terms in the town's Salary Administration Plan. The Veterans Agent Salary has been increased by two percents, approximately $200, for cost of living adjustments. And that is Article three, four, and five.
Okay, would anyone like to ask any questions or have a discussion about any of those three articles? I will recognize the microphone to my right.
Hello, I'm Jonathan Scraw from 23 Marlborough Street. I had a question about Article five. One of the line items is to repair the roofs of the schools. The high school is, I believe, only like ten years old, and I was surprised to see that it was needing repairs. So my question was, was it damaged by something, or is it really just Mother Nature taking its toll?
Is that four?
That's Article four, yes.
The text is at the top of page ten, first paragraph there.
Greg, would you like to answer that question?
Tom Administrator, Greg Johnson, Town Administrator. My understanding is that is a continuous of repairs that already been identified by the school department, as stated in the comments. Beyond that, I would have to defer to the superintendent's office over the school committee.
Would the superintendent please come and answer that question?
Brian Haas, Superintendent, yeah. So it's a combination of the high school roof, which is just Mother Nature, and the fowler roof, which again is close to twenty years old, so it also has been taking a beating in these New England winters.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? I recognize the microphone to my right.
Hi, I'm Jan Jones. I live on Nick Lane. Usually don't pipe up here, but here I go. On regarding the Route 27 improvements mentioned in Article four, will the public have a chance to give any feedback on the design? I understand it's in the design stage now, and I know in the past, there's been a lot of discussion about that intersection.
Mr. Johnson?
I really, I believe we've already passed that point in the, in the process. We've had, we did have some sessions to discuss the, you know, people's input. You might have missed it, yeah.
Okay, just as long as people have given feedback.
Mr. Moderator, Greg Johnson, Town Administrator. So that question had been addressed at the Finance Committee's public hearing, and there's a website, the webpage devoted just for that project. So if you go to the town's website, and then you go to the Public Works page, you'll see, I can't remember exactly where it is, but I believe it says projects, and you'll see all about Route 27 and the proposed plans that had already been previously presented to the Select Board.
Thank you.
I recognize the microphone in the center.
Stephen Wagner, 13 Charles Street. I've lived in Maynard since 1974 with my wife, roughly half a mile from the intersection in question, and I did attend by Zoom the Finance Committee meeting last week, and Town Administrator helpfully gave me the way to get to the documents on the town website that detail what is being done. My wife and I are very gratified to see the plans. This is the most dangerous intersection in town, most likely. Another friend of ours lives close enough, about one street away, and she has heard plenty of crashes there in the last fifty years. The only thing wrong with the plan is that it's taken fifty years to get it done, but I think it is really well worthwhile.
Thank you. I recognize the microphone to my right.
Bob McCarthy, 28 Tobin Drive. I have a question about Article four related to the design for the bleachers, and it's mostly about whether or not this, where, that this has been vetted for the top priority on the capital list, because I presume that some of the sums that have been circulated are going to be more than Certified Free Cash. So is there an update on, you know, what the overall cost is going to be and a funding source to go ahead with this design?
Greg Johnson, Town Administrator. No, plans have not been finalized. So with the, this, part of this funding is going towards the continuation of paying those vendors, the contractors, the project manager, and the designer to finalize plans. There's a task force assigned, you know, to look at those plans and further development, but to my understanding, this evening, there, there's no final plan, and therefore, no final cost associated with that.
So the plans will develop a cost as well for the final project?
Yes, so going into the consideration of replacing the bleachers, we had an overall estimate, which, which sort of triggers certain procurement law requirements. But beyond that, we hire the project manager, we've hired the designer, and then they sort of formulate what the, what the designs will, based on the feedback from the community and the Athletic Director and the school department. But I, I do not know of definitive plans at this time.
Can I just ask, is it likely to be capital funding that is going to be sourced, used to source the funding for this? Or is there an update from the Capital Planning Committee on where this fits in any of the plan? No?
You'll have to, you'll have to address the Capital Planning Committee.
Is there anyone here from the Capital Planning Committee?
Hi, I'm Lindsay McConkey, 52 Summer Street. Could you just repeat your question? I couldn't hear everything you said.
I'm just looking at, has the Capital Planning Committee talked about the planning for the bleachers themselves and the funding sources?
So yes, the Capital Planning Committee has talked about the bleachers as a project and has heard from the schools on that without an actual cost yet. We don't have any plan, and we don't know necessarily what the funding source will be. I believe that the schools will have to determine that, and that that will be forthcoming in the, in the next fiscal year. But it is on the radar of the Capital Planning Committee, and it has been part of our conversation for several years now. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Thank you. I recognize the microphone to my left.
Robert Morell, 4 Guyer Road. I'd like to hear a justification in Article three of the line item on electric vehicle charging. I'd like to know why our tax money, as a town resident, is being spent on electric vehicle charging stations. Can I have a justification for that?
Sure. I believe that, I believe that's the initial invest, in, in the initial investment in the charging stations, and they are a charge fee, there is a fee to charge at those stations that is coming back to the town.
Please use the microphone.
Hi, Justine St. John, Select Board. Because it's a revolving fund, what this is doing is it's allowing us to take the money in from people who are charging their vehicles at the charging stations, and then put that money back into the charging stations themselves. So it's not actually taxpayer, general operating funded money that's going towards this.
Did we fund, did we fund that to begin with, those charging stations, the installation?
Greg Johnson, Town Administrator. Partially, but majority of the funding came from Eversource, a grant from Eversource.
So from a taxpayer perspect, from a taxpayer perspective, what is this money being used for, this $35,000?
So I might jump in here.
Is it, is it ongoing maintenance?
So a revolving fund is, by Massachusetts law, requires that it be voted and approved and allocated even though the money's washed, the income washes the expense. And so it's revenue neutral to the town, but state law requires that it be appropriated at town meeting. So when they do the recap sheet, they offset that expense with the revenue. Okay, thank you for the answer. Any other questions? I recognize the microphone in the center.
Stephen Wagner, 13 Charles Street, again. I have a, a question of a, about a term at the top of page ten in article, the description for Article four. It refers to the need to address leaks and degradation of the building's envelope and roofs. I am not an engineer, or an architect, or someone who knows the building trades. I'm unfamiliar with what envelope means when applied to a school building. Could we have an explanation of that?
An envelope is the entire outside of the building, roof, walls, windows, doors, that's all the envelope.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Edward J. Mullin, 5 Nancy Circle. I would like to talk to the community about one of my pet projects and goals is alumni field. Right now, that field is in disrepair. I will vote for this article for the alumni field rentals for $50,000. But I'd like you to know how disappointed I am about that money and the expenditure. First of all, the stands over the other side on the home field is a disgrace. Now, we've been there for three years looking at yellow tape, and this is one of the main venues to come into our community, and alumni field is a showpiece if it is managed right. Those fields, I went to the School Committee and gave them an eight-point bulletin on how, what I thought would be better for alumni field. First of all, I feel the stand should be taken down. Take them right down, get rid of the yellow tape, and therefore, you don't have to have any cautionary advisement there. So what else is the plan for alumni field? To me, you're putting lipstick on a pig by doing this piecemeal and all of this. It should be a master plan for the whole thing. Go by the tennis court this morning, the nets are falling down, there's leaves all over the place, and once again, this is our community to come in here. And we, I, $50,000 could, could be used somewhere else, but I guess we need it. And how much the $50,000 prior to years? So I will vote for this, but I would like someone to take the bull by the horns and take alumni field and start addressing those problems for the main source of people coming into our community. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, we will go and vote now. We're going to be voting for Article Three, Article Four, and Article Five using ballot number seven. And remember, do not fold your ballots, please turn them upside down for the collectors. Thank you. Okay, while the ballots are being counted, I'd like to move on to Article Six. Mr. De Silva, would you please move Article Six?
Yeah, there's a beaming of it. Article Six is the Town General Budget Fund for Fiscal Year 2025, and I make a motion to move to approve Article Six as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation? Thank you. Mr. De Silva.
Okay. Article Six is the Town's General Fund Budget for the Fiscal Year 2025, and it is proposed that we raise and appropriate $53,581,016 for budget, budgeting in the categories listed in the warrant. The appropriation figure also shown in the warrant includes $240,000 for the overlay reserve over the listed expenditures. The budget has been developed over the course of many months, with input from many public meetings and many public boards and committees, departments, and interests. For next year's fiscal budget, the Select Board and the Town Administrator consider these factors: personnel costs, including wages, salaries, benefits, and any contractual, contractual obligations, and contractual increases to expenses including license and registration fees and market and industry trends. Projected operational expenses reflecting inflation and market cost, debt service related to authorized borrowing for the new Green Meadow School, including a direct operational increase of $609,526 over FY '24 to the Maynard Public Schools. The General Fund is described by the following listed categories: General Government for $4,088,552; Public Safety for $5,631, six, five hun, $5,631,872; Public Works $2,657,164; Cultural and Recreation, which is primarily the library, $655,833; The Maynard School District, $22,839,261; The Assabett Valley Technical School Assessment of $1,319,213; Employee Benefits of $10,075,030; Debt Service of $5,702,211; Reserve Fund of $250,000; and Public Education and Government Access PEG Communications of $361,880.
All set? Uh, any questions? All right, we'll hold the vote until we get the count from the previous motion.
Dick, Superintendent Haas is going to do the schools' portion of the presentation?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. Brian Haas, School Superintendent, glad to be here. I will let School Committee Chair, Natasha Rivera, start this.
Good evening. So I actually, this is just a small snippet of our larger budget presentation that we provided at our own budget, hearing, and through each board, the FinCom, the Select Board, and the Finance Committee. So I don't know if you want to go ahead and just...
Absolutely. Thanks for the opportunity to give you a snippet of our budget, and we are in budget this year, so this is really not a big ask. It's what Mr. De Silva already talked about. The three areas that we focused on in making the budget were curriculum, the social, emotional wellbeing of our students, and our student services. Thank you. And what you can see here is how much money the town allocates versus how much money the schools spend on an annual basis. And you can see the trend there is the schools continuously spend a little bit more than the school, than the town is able to allocate. That's not unusual. We want to maintain our programming, we want to offer the best services we can to all of our students, and in order to do so, we have to continuously grow a little bit every year. And this always comes up, maintenance, it came up earlier this evening. You can see that we in fact do invest in our buildings and by maintaining them, and that's just a history from 2020 through FY '25 about how much we spend in maintaining the building to the best of our ability. And what we're going to spend this year, as you can see from that, would be that green row, which would be $23,629,565, which is $800,000 above the town allocation. And how are we able to do that? Like, if I was you, I would ask me that. So I'll tell you how we're going to do that. We have some amount of money in what we call our revolving accounts. So for example, we get money for school choice, there's money in that. So we're able to do that this year. I'm grateful we're able to do that this year. That maintains our budget, that maintains our programming. It will be a different conversation next year, because as we spend our revolvers, they don't replenish as quickly as they used to. So this is, this is an easy ask. And you can see, those are examples of our revolving accounts and how much money we're going to pull out of each one, a little more than we originally thought. So we pull money from our preschool account, our foreign exchange account, our circuit breaker, and our school choice account to balance the school budget. School revolving account, that's a number that we get based on kids from out of district who come to Maynard. And you can see, just based on the chart visually, it's gone down. So less kids come, we have less money in that account, so we can't go back to that revolving account to the same capacity as we have in prior years. And if you're really interested in school budget, this is always a fun chart. It's the Department of Education Function Codes. Really not that exciting. It breaks it down by categories, and at the end, we still come to our $23,629,565 to run the district successfully. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. Thank you. You had anything further you want to add?
No, I didn't know if anyone had any questions, so...
Questions? Okay, we will... You said? I recognize the microphone to my left.
Hello, Kevin Stone, 17 Rice Road. I am speaking on my personal behalf. I just want to call your attention to the last sentences in the Finance Committee's comments. To meet services in FY '25, the School Department plans to draw on various reserves and revolving funds to supplement the town-provided budget. By the School Department's estimates, these resolving, reserve revolving funds may not replenish quickly enough to supple, supplement the town's provided budget FY '26 in the same manner. So I just want to call out to everyone that one of the consequences of this budget is that we are going to have to have a much, we're likely going to have to have a much more difficult conversation next year, where we either have to identify additional sources of revenues, or we'll be looking at service cuts. Just for your awareness that this is one of the consequences of the decision and our recommendations.
Any further comments? Okay, we will proceed to vote Article Six using ballot number eight. Will the collectors please collect? All right, for your information on Articles Three, Four, and Five, there were 123 yeses, there were five nos, two blanks, so the article carries. All three articles carry. Moving on to Article Seven. Ms. St. John?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Moderator, Justine St. John, Select Board, and I move to approve Article Seven as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
All right. Ernie Hool, Superintendent of Assabett, will be doing the presentation.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good evening, Ernie Hool, Superintendent Director at Assabett Valley. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening, first to thank you for your continued support of Assabett, we're celebrating our 50th year. And this article comes before our communities, as Assabett's facing an interesting dilemma, a good one, in that in the 50-year history, this is the first year in which we have no out-of-district students. And what happens with that is, with the out-of-district student tuition money, for the past 50 years, we've been able to handle our capital improvements, minor ones, as well as make capital equipment purchases through out-of-district tuition and grant funding. With the out-of-district tuition money going away, we don't have a sustainable, feasible capital improvement process. So in order to do that, we need to establish a stabilization fund, which through Mass General Law Section 71, Section 16G and a half, allows regional schools to do that. It's the same type of stabilization fund that your community has here in Maynard, and it allows us to build that capital up to a 5% maximum of what our operational budget is. So on a $25 million budget, we could have up to $1.25 million at one single point, not every year. For a total combination, it can't exceed that 5%. So what that would do is assist with some of the issues that weren't corrected in the renovation project that took place in 2013 to 2016. As it stated, it was a renovation project, so not the entire building was able to be fixed or corrected. We have floors that are coming up, we have roadways, driveways, things of that nature. So that's in essence what the stabilization fund is for. In capital equipment purchases, that would be for our current technical programs. As you can imagine, running a current technical school, the equipment that our students learn on can be very expensive, upwards of $25,000 or more. And the definition of capital equipment for us, just for your knowledge, is that a piece of equipment that would be $25,000 or more with a lifespan of 10 years or more. So we're not talking any kinds of hand tools or consumables.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion. Okay, we'll proceed to the vote. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your ballots. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your ballots. Motion carries. Thank you. Before we move on to eight, I would like to give you the results of Article Six, 119 yes, 12 nos, and zero blanks, so the article carries. Article Eight, Ms. St. John, please move.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article Eight as presented, as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Okay. Would you move Article Nine?
I move to approve Article Nine as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Thank you. Discussion on Article Eight.
All right.
Do I have presentations?
Presentations, okay. So for Article Eight, that is the Sewer Enterprise Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2025, and paid through utility rates, the article funds one of the town's utilities, the other being water services. And it reflects costs to services, including personnel, supplies, contracts, planning, and indirect costs for benefits and administration. There is a list, I can go through it individually if you would like me to, but in the interest of time, the list is there and printed in your warrant as far as the expenses. And then similar to Article Nine, the Water Enterprise Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2025, this article is paid by utility rates and funds as well, and it funds the town's water utility operations and represents an increase due to inflation, contracted services, collective bargaining, state and federal mandates, and especially the increased needs for capital improvements to distribution and treatment systems to... improvements to distribution and treatment systems to continue to provide clean water to the town.
All right, no further discussion. We'll call for a vote. You'll be voting for Articles Eight and Article Nine using ballot nine. Okay, the next three articles are actually hand votes, but I find it convenient to discuss them together because they're a like topic, and usually people cross over. And so we'll move them, as we have been doing with the secret ballots, we'll move them, but we'll come back and vote on them separately. So would you please move Article Ten?
All right. I move to approve Article Ten as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Article Eleven.
I move to approve Article Eleven as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
And Article Twelve.
I move to approve Article Twelve as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Okay, do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee also recommends.
Okay, thank you. Would you please give your presentation on Article Ten?
Absolutely. So Article Ten, this article would use $500,000 of the $1,133,431 of water retained earnings to establish a reserve fund for fiscal year 2025 within the water enterprise budget for unanticipated expenses. Similar to the general funds reserve fund, the authorization to use reserves for utilities would come from the Select Board.
Article Eleven.
This is similar to what I just explained, except for on the sewer side. This article would use $200,000 of the $728,914 of the sewer retained earnings to establish a reserve fund to provide efficient response to unanticipated failures in the town's public sewer system.
And Twelve.
And number Twelve, this article transfers $180,000 from the water enterprise's retained earnings for the acquisition and outfitting of a replacement truck that serves as a frontline water utility service vehicle.
And I open it to discussion and questions for any of Article Ten, Eleven, or Twelve. Okay, there being no questions then. All those in favor of Article Ten, please raise your ballot. Thank you. All those opposed? Article Ten passes. Article Eleven, all those in favor, please raise your ballot. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Article Twelve, all those in favor, please raise your ballot. Thank you. All those opposed? Okay, exercise is over. No gym tonight. Mr. Swanberg, would you please move Article Thirteen?
I will move to approve Article Thirteen as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Would you move Article Fourteen, please?
I move to approve Article Fourteen as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Okay, before we proceed to the presentation on Articles Eight and Nine, 128 yes, six noes, the articles carry. Mr. Swanberg, please give your presentation for Article Thirteen.
Yes, these articles transfer supplements from the DPW, the Department of Public Works' budget. And generally, we take the funds from the sale of lots and put them into two different accounts. One is for the operational requirements of the Town Cemetery Division, and that is Article Thirteen. And the other account is for the Perpetual Care Trust Fund, which is intended for major capital projects and improvements or expansions, and that is Article Fourteen.
Okay, discussions on Article Thirteen or Fourteen? Okay, because Article Thirteen requires a secret ballot, we'll just vote on ballot number 10 on, for Article Thirteen. So you're voting for one article on ballot number 10. Okay, so we're now going to vote on Article Fourteen. All of those in favor, please raise your ballots. Thank you. All those opposed? Article carries. Would you be kind enough, Mr. Swanberg, to move Article Fifteen?
Certainly. I will move to approve Article Fifteen as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Thank you.
This article transfers funding from the lease payments that the town receives for the golf course by Sterling Golf Course Management. And it's put into a capital improvement fund to support improvements for that facility. And in particular, we're looking at plans to address the roof and envelope. The total cost of those is expected to be more than what we've received from those funds in one year, so we will keep those funds in the account and add to them until we are ready to make those repairs.
So we'll have to wait a bit here. This requires a secret ballot because it's going to involve more than $54,000, and it requires a secret ballot. So we'll wait until the counters have completed the previous count. Okay, so Article Fifteen, please use ballot number eleven. Vote for Article Fifteen? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you certainly may. I recognize the microphone to my left.
Okay. The last couple of years, we've voted to give money for this, the benefit of the roof at the golf course. The roof is, as you well know, and as the Select Board knows, it leaks all the time into the senior center, into the lavatories, into the function hall. Now, it's been doing that for years. This past year, we had the School Department come and talk to the seniors about helping them pass the bill for the elementary school. And the men that were there were told they couldn't go to the men's room through the senior center because there was debris in the way. They had to go through the function hall to get into the men's room. There are other things around the envelope that should have been fixed by now that haven't been fixed, that can be safety hazards. And I think, you know, we're putting good money after bad places. That building is just a mess. And if all that water has been coming in for that many years, what do you think is below it? Remember what Green Meadow looked like? So what I'm asking people out here to think about that. We've been giving a lot of money to repair a roof that is not repaired and an envelope that's falling apart. When we voted to purchase the golf course, we purchased the golf course. Not a function hall, not a senior center. That is not big enough to fit the people in it that we have that are seniors in this town. So I think we need to start looking at just throwing more money away and think of what we're going to do to change that. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson? You are the Capital Planning Committee, you're down as the SME here.
Mr. Moderator.
What is the plans for the roof at the golf course? I think that's the essence of the question.
So the money has not been spent to your, I just want to clarify. So money is received through the terms of the contract that we have with Sterling Golf Management for the golf course. They have an obligation through the terms to maintain at a certain level the golf course and its surroundings, the function hall. Beyond that, which is a significant capital repairs, which is required to address the envelope, that's why we've been trying to collect money over the years, as you alluded to. But as the sponsor comments note, the estimation we have from designers is $770,000. And so myself and my, the Finance Team and the Select Board, Capital Planning Committee otherwise, we will continue to discuss how we can address those concerns, both to meet the needs of the senior center as well as our obligations in the terms of our contract with Sterling Golf. But we do not have finalized plans this evening.
Excuse me. In other words, we are not going to repair the roof again this year. It's going to be further down the line because we need more money. And as we wait and wait and wait, the place is getting worse.
That is, just to clarify, that is not what I said. I addressed the capital repairs to the envelope and the roof. Repairs is, could be significantly less cost than what I'm alluding to. $770,000 is near replacement, including HVAC and otherwise.
Of the whole roof, which we were told last year needed to be done. Mr. Justin.
I'm not sure what the question is, actually, Mr. Moderator.
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to say, why are we spending money on a roof that we haven't repaired, that continues to leak, and every year we keep giving more money to hold aside to fix it while it's falling apart in the meantime? To me, that's not a good business model. And for us to be able to keep giving money in our taxes for these types of things, I think is, it's not fair. It's not fair to the taxpayers in this town. Not everyone knows what it looks like up there. The golf course looks beautiful itself. The building? Not. As someone said earlier, you could put lipstick on a pig and make it look good.
So I think the question, if I could summarize it, is, is there a short-term plan and a long-term plan that will address the leaking roof this year?
This year, so to address the leaks in the roof? I think if it falls within the terms of the contract that Sterling Golf is obligated to meet and fix those repairs, then we should hold them to that. If it's over that cost, which I don't, off the top of my head, I don't recall what that dollar amount threshold is, then I will, I will discuss it with the facilities team, perhaps the Select Board and others, to address the long-term plans, which I do not have this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on Article Fifteen? I recognize the microphone to my left.
Hello, Kevin Stone, 17 Rice Road. I have a question for the town administrator or Justin DiMarco, whoever can answer this question. But I believe in the Finance Committee meeting where we discussed the roof of the golf course, there was a certain threshold, a dollar amount, for the repairs of the roof. I'm curious if either the town administrator or the DPW director could state what that
So, Mr. Moderator, if, I believe I just said it, but I'll just say it again to clarify. Per the comments in the town meeting warrant, current costs for roof replacement projects are approximately $770,000.
Can I clarify my question?
Yes.
Yes. So I believe the contract with Sterling Golf puts on Sterling Golf a certain obligation for maintenance and repair of the building. I'm curious what the demarcation is between Sterling Golf's responsibilities and the town's responsibilities for the maintenance of the building.
As I said, and I apologize, I do not recall what that, what that specific, if you give me some time, I can look up the contract, but I, it's in the thousands of dollars, but I, off the top of my head, I don't remember.
Is Justin DiMarco available to answer the question?
No, he's not here this evening.
Okay.
If you, if you would like, I can follow up with you, Mr. Stone, with that contract. It's a public document, I just don't have it on me.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'll leave it up to other residents if they want to, what they want to do, but I'll, I'll rest my question and leave it up to other residents if they want to follow up.
Thank you.
So do we have a rough order of magnitude number? I mean, are we talking?
I'm reluctant to say the wrong number, Mr. Moderator.
Tens of thousands of dollars or hundreds of thousands?
It's not hundreds of thousands of dollars.
So it's tens of thousands of dollars?
It's not meant to do a capital replacement. It is meant to address the day-to-day maintenance and repairs.
Does that give you some sense that? Yeah. I recognize the microphone in the middle.
My name is David Steele, 229 Main Street. My question is simply, where is the money coming from? It says here in this article, "From the Maynard Golf Course receipts reserved for appropriation to pay for capital improvements to the golf course." What does that mean? Does it mean taxpayer money? Does it mean money raised already? From where? I think that's a critical question to address some of the concerns here.
So this, this would be money received through operation of the golf course, so green season, things like that.
Any further questions? Okay, this is the secret ballot. Article Fifteen will use ballot number eleven. Okay, so Article Thirteen was 131 votes yes, no, noes, so the article carries. Article Sixteen.
I move to approve Article Sixteen as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Thank you.
In 2020, the town...
In 2020, the town authorized the use of $1 million out of the town's general stabilization fund to pay for the feasibility phase for the new Green Meadow Elementary School. And that passed last fall. The state's school building authority has now reimbursed a part of the town's expenses for that $1 million. That portion, this article would place that portion back into the same general stabilization fund that it came from.
Being no discussion, this is a hand vote. All those in favor of Article 16, please raise your ballot. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Gavin. I am a member of the select board. It's nice to see you all here. Thank you for your patience in working through the warrant articles. Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 17 as printed in the warrant, accept the words to do or act thereon.
Do I have a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, this article, I think I should open by saying what it's not. This article is not for us to debate this evening or discuss this evening what we're going to do with the 61 to 63 Summer Street. For those who haven't been around for 20 years yet, those people would refer to it as the art space building. The people who've been around for more than 20 years would refer to it as the old Fowler Building. But everybody knows what it is from those two different names. But what this does do is authorize the select board eventually to sell this property in some fashion, and in a fashion that the select board determines to be in the best interest of the town. We're not going to do that on our own because over the last year and a half, probably, there's been a select group of individuals who have been analyzing the future and the best approach to dispose of in some fashion, whether or not we could use it, whether or not we could not use it. And the hints we're getting is that there's not going to be any municipal value to this, to this property or to this building. So therefore, in order to avoid coming back to a town meeting when they do make their presentation to us and give us their recommendations, this will allow us to move forward when that, when that presentation is made to us. And anticipation of the question, we don't know a specific time that they're going to come forward to make their presentation, but it's going to be sooner than later. As I say, it's, it's a group of people who've been working on this for quite some time. They have analyzed, they've been working with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, known as the MAPC, to help them. They've held various forums with public, and so they're prepared to come before us, and they've been giving us updates along the way, but they're prepared to come before us. And we had tasked them at the outset with coming to us with three to five plans or ideas for the use of that building going forward. That's fairly imminent, and this article will allow us to move forward in an expedient fashion.
Thank you. I recognize the microphone to my right.
Okay, Edward J. Mullin, 5 Nancy Circle. First of all, I went to high school there, so that, that gives you a little timeline. Please, I'm going to follow up with my eyesore category. I mean, I live on Nancy Circle, we drive down Summer Street, the place is a mess. What are we going to do? Let's put the DPW there, cut the grass, cut the shrubs. I mean, we can't let this building fall or the area fall in disrepair. Now, I don't know who's driving who, but select board, please, ask the DPW, go by and look, get the lawnmowers out there so at least it's not an eyesore in town. Just like I told you about Alumni Field, the tennis court is in disrepair. We can't have this. We must take care of our areas and make a good impression on what we have here as a community. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, this is going to require a two-thirds vote, and it is secret ballot. Okay, the results of Article 15, 108 for, 24 no, two blanks, the article carries. Mr. Schisler, would you move Article 18?
Yes, I move to approve Article 18 as printed in the warrant, accept the words to do or act thereon.
Do I have a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
Good evening. My name is Danny Schisler. I serve as vice chair of the Maynard Tree Committee, and I'm here to ask for your support tonight to establish a tree bylaw for the town of Maynard. This bylaw was developed over the course of three years by the Maynard Tree Committee with guidance from Maynard's Tree Warden, Tree Corps, Bylaw Committee, Town Council, and Select Board. The bylaw aims to protect and enhance Maynard's urban tree canopy by describing the authority of the town of Maynard's Tree Warden to oversee the maintenance and care of publicly-owned trees, to establish performance standards for the planting, maintenance, protection, removal, and replacement of public trees, to enable the formation of a tree committee to advocate for the expansion and protection of the urban canopy, and to educate the public about the importance of trees. And finally, critically, by allowing the town to apply for state funding to enhance our urban canopy through the DCR's Urban Forestry Program. It's important to note that this bylaw applies to all public shade trees, which are trees within or on the boundaries of a public right-of-way, and to town trees, trees on public property under the control and authority of the Select Board or Recreation Commission, except trees that fall under the jurisdiction of other municipal bodies. This bylaw does not apply to privately-owned trees. So tonight, we're asking for your support to help protect a precious natural resource that belongs to all of us, our trees, and ensure a green future for those who will call Maynard their home well beyond our own time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I recognize the microphone to my right.
Hi, Jonathan Scraw, 23 Marrow Street. I like trees. I'm generally not opposed to the article, but I'm confused by it. I don't understand what we are and are not regulating. It seems that it all comes down to the definition of a public shade tree that you just referred to, and I must be missing something in the legalese because it says in or next to roads. I don't see any trees in roads, you know, between the double yellow line, and there's very few that actually touch the pavement. So is there some definition of how far out from the pavement is included in being a public versus a private tree?
There's no general definition, and I can't give you any number that would tell you how far from the center of the road. What I can tell you is that the parcel boundaries are quite complicated, and they rely on the, basically, the tax parcel map. So public right-of-way trees can be next to sidewalks, they can be in the grassy strip next to the roadway. All of those areas are considered public right-of-way, and the determination on trees that are on the boundary are made by the Tree Warden and the Department of Public Works. So in general, this applies to trees that are adjacent to roadways and owned by the town.
So how would a private property owner determine which tree on their lot is or isn't a public tree?
Yeah, if you had questions, you could look at your plot plan, or you could consult with the head of the DPW, who's also our Tree Warden, and he could help you determine whether it's a tree that falls within the jurisdiction and ownership of the town.
Okay.
So I can't make any generalization for you tonight to help you, but I would point you towards the DPW.
You can ask more questions, but you've had one follow-up. I got to recognize the, my microphone to the left first. Robert Morrell, Forgyer Road. Just a question, will this committee be making recommendations for fiscal expenditures of taxpayer money?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions? I recognize the microphone in the center.
Stephen Wagner, 13 Charles Street. This in the past has been somewhat confusing because the town used to have a program where it provided trees that could be planted on private land, and we have such a tree on our property. But I think that is not technically considered a public tree under the proposal here. It is easy to underestimate the benefits of a sufficient tree coverage within town. You think it gets hot in the summer with the trees we have, imagine what it'd be like without them. I think this is a step in the right direction.
Thank you. Any other comments? You have to come to the microphone. I recognize the microphone to my left.
What, oh. I'm Thomas Janzen at 21 Durant. I think that Eversource has given instructions in its public pamphlets to not grow a tree underneath wires. Does, and it also seems that there could be a tree with roots going very close to a water main or water line. Do these things create conflicts with the authority of a tree committee? And whose authority? You know, who, who has the authority and whose, whose guidelines prevail?
I'm not sure I understand exactly what your question is.
Well, if Eversource says that you shouldn't plant a tree under the wires, the way someone did about 30 years ago on my property, and the tree committee feels it has the authority to prevent the tree from being trimmed or cut down, and Eversource comes and trims it or I cut it down, whose, whose authority prevails?
Yeah, thank you. The tree committee has no authority over trees planted on private property.
If it's within a few feet of the road?
Yeah, correct. If it's on private property, it's not within the jurisdiction of the tree committee.
That's a clarification. Thank you very much.
I recognize the microphone to my left.
Hello, Kevin Stone, 17 Rice Road. On personal behalf, so I have a tree on my property that may or may not be a public tree. It lies very close to the road, but I don't have a sidewalk, so it may or not be a public tree, but it is likely creating a safety hazard because it is growing over the power lines. How would the tree committee respond to this situation or other situations involving public trees that are creating a possible safety hazard with, with those power lines?
Thank you. Yeah, I would encourage you to discuss that with the Department of Public Works, and they could inform any decision around maintenance and safety pruning of that tree. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, so Article 18, we will vote. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your ballots. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Before we go to Article 19, I would like to read the results of Article 17, which requires a two-thirds vote. So there were nine no votes. So if I double nine, that's 18. So I have to have 18 or more yes votes, and I have 123, so the motion carries. Mr. Gavin, would you please move ballot 19?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to approve Article 19 as printed in the warrant, accept, change the dates of January 23rd, 2023, and March 3rd, 2023, to August 29th, 2023, and accept words to do or act thereon.
And are you adding a date of August 29th?
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator?
I, did you say that, and adding a date of August 29th?
Yes, I did.
Oh, you did. I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
And I didn't hear you.
All right. Do I have a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
Okay. Presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is a Back to the Future article. The town, as you probably recall from a prior town meeting, it was a special town meeting of October 10th, 2023, the town meeting voters approved the taking of certain roadways. Is there somebody who can change? I think we have the actual diagrams. It's Heights Terrace, Fletcher Street, and Allen Drive, and then there's another, if we can switch it one more time, sort of tells, shows you where it is. It's over towards Erickson's Ice Cream, three roads that head up the hill. And the town approved this at a previous town meeting, but we failed to hold what's called a layout hearing prior to that vote. So we needed to have a layout hearing, which we have. We held that meeting within the last couple of weeks, where basically, we established what roads we're taking, what they are in a public hearing, and we've done that properly this year, so this is ready to go. So for the folks that live on these roads, once this vote goes through, now they will be in line at, at the time that justice is ready to do so, to have those roads paved and repaired.
Seeing no discussion, then we'll vote for Article 19 using ballot 13. All right, so we'll move to Article 20. Mr. Crenshaw.
Thank you. I'm Bill Crenshaw, member of the community preservation. I'm Bill Crenshaw, member of the Community Preservation Committee, and I move to approve Article 20 as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a finance committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Okay, we'll now do Article 21 as well, so would you move that article?
Yes, I move to approve Article 21 as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Okay, do I have a finance committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Okay. Mr. Crenshaw, would you give your presentation?
Thank you. So, these two articles are for the Community Preservation Fund. The first article talks about what we do with money expected to come in this coming year. The second article talks about spending money that we accumulated from prior years. So, starting with Article 20, a little explanation of the Community Preservation Fund. It's used for certain types of recreation, open space, affordable housing, and historic preservation projects. The money in that fund comes from a surcharge on your real estate taxes and a partial state match. Now, for the coming year, fiscal '25, we expect revenues of about $450,000. And Article 20 is asking you to authorize spending some of that money and setting aside the rest of it. Now, the money that's being asked to be spent, most of it, of a, most of it, $115,000 plus an extra $7,000 in interest, is for money related to the borrowing when we bought the golf course many years ago. We're still paying off the bond, we got a couple more years to go. We're also asking to be able to spend up to $10,000 on administrative expenses, although historically, we've never used that much, and that money just rolls back into the fund at the end of the year. The rest of the money is being set aside, and the state dictates that certain amounts of that money have to be set aside in specific accounts. So, we have a Historic Preservation Reserve Fund, we have an Open Space Reserve Fund, and a Community Housing Reserve Fund, and we have to put at least 10% of the total money into each, so that's the $45,000 going to each three. The rest of the money is in a budgeted reserve fund, because that's more flexible how it can be used. It can be used for any of those other three things: open space, historic, community housing, and it can also be used for recreation. But, of course, once we put that money in there, we need your permission to spend it. And so, that brings us to Article 21, which is authorization from you to spend money that had been accumulated in prior years. And every year, the Community Preservation Committee receives proposals by individuals, committees, town departments, to do projects related to the four categories that the state allows us to spend the money on. And the committee vets those projects, makes sure they meet state criteria, and then if projects look good to the committee, we come forth and recommend that you approve them. This year, we're recommending you approve four projects. One of the projects is for the fieldhouse, and it's money to study what it would take to preserve and rehab the historic fieldhouse. The rest of the money on the other three projects are things that tend to come up every year for at least the past few years. We have money going into the Affordable Housing Trust. This money is not committed to anything specific at the moment, it's just there in the trust, so when the opportunity arises, the trust can act quickly to better affordable housing in the town. Similar to the Conservation Trust, you know, that's just money that's being accumulated there in case an opportunity arises to purchase some conservation land. And then, lastly, there's some money going to the Regional Housing Services Office, and the RHSO is a private organization that the town contracts with to handle all the administrative stuff related to affordable housing in Maynard, because the state has lots of rules and regulations about how to do that. So, that group handles, like, the applications for new affordable housing, the annual reports to the state, checking to make sure that tenants meet the income limits, and all sorts of administrative tasks. So, in sum, Article 20 is asking you to spend a little bit and set aside the rest of money that's coming in next year, and Article 21 is asking you to spend some money that had came in in prior years.
Okay, we'll now take Articles 22 and 23 together. Would you please move Article 22, Mr. Gavin?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 22, I move to approve as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a finance committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Do you want me to move 23?
23, please.
I move to approve Article 23 as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a finance committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Would you please give your presentation?
Thank you. Both of these articles are very, very similar. As it says in the warrant, state law allows communities to, through a vote of town meeting, to authorize the approval of contracts that are longer than three years and up to 10 years. And we've got two contracts specifically that are coming before us for renewal, and these are outside contracts, not labor contracts. One for emergency notification services, the other for information technology, that are up for renewal, that we wish to have the same authorization to allow us to have that window. We find, over the years, and it's found, I think typically, that the longer the length of the contract, the better deal we get, so we want to get the best deal we possibly can, so I would encourage voters to endorse these articles.
Okay, so, where we don't know what the bids are going to be, and to be prudent, we have a trigger point of $54,000, and there is the possibility that it'll go over. So, to play it safe, we're gonna do a secret ballot, so that they can accept a bid should it go over that amount of money. So, on Articles 22 and 23, please vote for them using ballot number 15. We had one no, double that is two. I have to have more than two to make it pass. We got 133, so the article carries. On Articles 20 and 21, we had 130 in favor, six opposed, one blank, so that article, those articles also carry. Ms. McMillan, would you move Article 24, please?
Yes, sir. I move to approve Article 24 as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
And do I have a finance committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Ms. McMillan?
The Board of Health is proposing an additional measure to the town's bylaws to prohibit roosters in the town of Maynard in order to prevent a public health nuisance. The proposed measure to prevent, to prohibit roosters in the town of Maynard is ordered to prevent a public health nuisance separate from the applications of the right-to-farm laws. Most odors, noises typically from farms are not considered public health nuisances under a right-to-farm law. A public health nuisance is defined as unreasonable interferences with community members' health, safety, peace, or comfort. The town's animal control officer has reported complaints to the Board of Health of noises from roosters between the hours of 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. Informal attempts to have owner relocate roosters were unsuccessful, and thereby the owner was ordered to abate the nuisance. The Board of Health is seeking a long-term solution to prevent such nuisance in alignment with other municipalities.
Thank you. Discussion. I recognize the microphone to my left.
Hello, Kevin Stone, 17 Rice Road, acting in my personal capacity. Mr. Moderator, I believe that the passage of this article would be a mistake akin to a lot of the pit bull bans that were highly popular a little while ago. I believe that we are, we would be unfairly generalizing the behavior of people's beloved pets while not addressing specific instances. I don't think it's fair to say that all roosters are a nuisance, when there are individual behaviors that could happen. I think that certain roosters are loud, and we should definitely address it, but I believe this behavior, the nuisance itself, would be best addressed directly via a noise ordinance, as opposed to addressing certain statistical correlations. Yes, some roosters make noise, but not all roosters do. Thank you.
Thank you. To my left.
Tina Wilson, 26 Espie Avenue. I want to concur. I think it's ridiculous. I think it's the same as saying all Chihuahuas bark, you know, a lot, so we should ban all Chihuahuas. I think this is a dumb proposal, and I agree that we should vote it down.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Kate Wheeler, Harrison Street. So, I, in concurrence, it feels as if we are ending chicken raising. You know, children love to, I know there, you can raise hens, but you have to buy them in. You will never have a fertile egg without a rooster. Some roosters are contained in ways that are quite, I understand you're trying to solve it, you know, forward, but the problem has been solved for now, and a noise ordinance is what we need in town. We need it for lots of loud sounds. Let's solve the larger problem, and if the rooster problem has gone away, for now, let's hope that future rooster raisers are more responsible and respectful.
Recognize the microphone to my left.
Hillary Griffiths, 14 Mayberry Road. I feel similarly, in that I think if the, if the actual issue is the noise, we should address the noise, instead of addressing the symptom of the problem, which leads to murdering lots of baby chickens, baby roosters.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Thank you. Justine Ferguson, Linden Street. I also agree that we should just, we should not have an incomplete ban on roosters in Maynard. It's just that I agree that it should be a noise ordinance, not a complete ban on roosters. And I actually would prefer that we focus more on the light pollution that's more harmful than rooster noises around the town, so thank you.
Recognize the microphone to my left.
Thomas Jansen, 21 Durant. I grew up in Los Angeles, and part of the valley that, San Fernando Valley, that was still a little rural, and there was a rooster in the early 60s, and it didn't harm us, but as long as, as long as we can not enforce against 110-decibel lawn mowers still in use, sometimes it's early as 7:00 in the morning, just because it's a landscaper, but while I was told by a town authority that we could enforce against a Boeing 747 Max taxiing down the street for noise, but not against a landscaper, not if it was dragging a lawn mower, I think that this is a misdirected effort. Thank you.
I recognize the microphone in the center.
Stephen Wagner, 13 Charles Street. I have mixed feelings on this one. In the first place, people are right that there's a general noise problem. We have entirely too many loud motorcycles, we have entirely too many cars that are not properly muffled and so forth. So, I think a general noise regulation, much stricter than what we have enforced now, is overdue. Now, as to the roosters, I'm probably less bothered by a rooster at 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning than 99% of the people in town, because I tend to get up early. But, but, this is a densely settled town. If you take away the conservation area that used to be farmland and nobody lives in now, we are one of the most densely populated places in the state. And I can see, and certainly my other family members living in the same house, think it would be awful to be really close to a rooster that was in the habit of making a lot of noise. I would, I would be comfortable with something like regulating roosters along the lines of the other domestic animals, where you have to have an acre of land at least, so that the neighbors wouldn't be too close. But how many places in Maynard have one-acre zoning? Not a whole lot. And on balance, I'm inclined to vote for this. I understand the objections to it, though.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Yes, Bill Coleman, Howard Road. I've kind of a question or concern about the enforcement of it. Basically, I think some people are reacting as if like there's going to be a rooster police going around every hen house, checking on this. I think it's probably more of, if there is a complaint, then the animal control officer would go there, check it out at the time that is in question, and see if it's, first if it annoys, and also the fact then to inform the person that the rooster has to go. And that gives the town legal standing to say, yes, it's an annoyance, you gotta get rid of it.
Exactly. There will not be a rooster police force. This was brought to us by complaints in a neighborhood of a rooster that we had to handle with, I don't know if Jen is here. Oh, there she is. So, that's how this came about, so.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Bill Crenshaw, Mockingbird Lane. And when we're ready to vote, I request that we do so by secret ballot.
Okay, there's been a request for secret ballot. Do, do I have five people who would like a secret ballot? I do, okay. Thank you. Yes, I recognize the microphone to my right.
Natalie Robert, 48 Summer Street. I just have a quick question. Is this, the comments from the sponsor, reference a rooster?
Is this, the comments from the sponsor reference a rooster and the owner? Is this like one specific instance that has occurred that is causing this to be before us?
This was one incident, yes, yes.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Yeah, Bill Coleman again. Just one last comment, and I just want to give you a little anecdote of where it kind of is coming from, that my grandfather used to keep chickens and roosters. And just to put into perspective, he was born in 1877, so it's a long time ago. I guess he had a rooster that crowed a lot and annoyed a neighbor. So the neighbor went to him and said, "So John, what would you like for that rooster?" And my grandfather noticed that the guy had a crystal punch, or actually a pressed glass punchbowl in his room, and he said, "You know what? I always liked that punchbowl. Can you, I'll swap you the rooster for that punchbowl." So he did, and so the neighbor took the chicken and probably went home and had cocoa vin or something else, and just, you know, what they, what you usually dispatch an old rooster with. And my grandfather kept it, and my grandmother said, "John, why do you want that?" He says, "Oh, I like it, it's pretty," you know, kind of thing. So, over the years, my mother got it. We had it in my house when I was growing up for it, and we've always loved the little story about this, and I told it to my daughter, so now she has it in her house for it. But the point is, is that sometimes a rooster can just be an annoying thing in the morning when you want to sleep in, and you hear it. I know that someone in my neighborhood has one, has some chickens, has a rooster. I kind of hear it in the afternoon when I'm sitting out outside during the summer, doesn't bother me. In the summertime with, you know, have the air conditioning's gone, if it's hot, won't hear it. In the winter, houses close up, don't hear it. So it's sort of a thing where I think it really comes down to, is what people concern with a case-by-case basis, is really is, if you're close enough to another neighbor that it's annoying you, that neighbor can report it or ask you to do something about it, and you have the basic stand back and saying, "The town forbids it." So if you want to just try to like get one in and see if you can keep it and have it behave, fine, but if it doesn't, then the town has the reason to basically say, "You've got to get rid of it." So, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll vote by secret ballot. This is Article 24, and please use ballot number 16. Okay, the results of Articles 22 and 23, 127 for, four against. Motion carries. Article 25, Mr. Osseno.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm, I move to approve Article 25 as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Do I have a Planning Board recommendation?
Planning Board recommends.
Okay. Would you like to give your presentation?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Ossenelt. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board here in town. I have a brief presentation on this article. Greg, would you mind going back one slide? So just, so the purpose is to just amend, modify the zoning bylaws, simply to clarify that site plan approval will only be required in what's called Zone 1 of the Water Supply Protection District, and I'll explain what this means, Greg. So each, in every community, we have water, water supply districts, in a sense, so, and in this particular case, we get our water from drinking water wells, so we have what's called two zones of compliance. There's Zone 1 and Zone 2. Zone 1 is a 400-foot radius around each drinking water supply well, and that, and that has certain stipulations, such as you can't have certain, different types of chemicals or storage tanks on site. It's just meant so that no types of chemicals can get into the groundwater supply directly above where, where the water's being pumped from. Zone 2 is a larger area, it's the area in yellow on the map, and this has some stipulations as well, but it's a little less restrictive. Next slide. So our current language is not quite clear, and it just refers to the Water Supply Protection District when site plan approval is required. This language is just a little vague. Town staff believe this is probably what's called a Scribner's error, that it was just simply not exactly the intent when this was passed, but we're not quite sure. In any case, we're looking to improve this by simply adding the language that says, "Site plan approval is only required in the Zone 1, not in Zone 2 of the Water Supply Protection District." I think there's one more slide. No? Okay, that's it.
Okay, discussion. I recognize the microphone in the center.
Asher Greenberg, 21 Woodridge.
Please, please speak in.
Asher Greenberg, 21 Woodridge Road. I'm wondering if there is another water-related requirement for special permits, that if this goes away, there'd be another review of water management plans and site management plans for potential flooding or 100-year water events?
I think we're probably talking about two different things. What we're talking about here is only a site plan review that's required to be done by the planning board, typically when a building is constructed or modified on a property. So for example, a few years ago, DPW proposed to construct a building on one of, adjacent to one of the new supply wells. That was within the Zone 1 Water Protection District. We had, the DPW had to come to Planning Board to get that building approved for a site plan review. If, if we were to look at it of all zoning, all Zone 2 area, if a building were to be modified in, in Zone 2, which includes a lot of different residential districts, potentially that means that every, every applicant, every owner would need to come to Planning Board to receive site plan review. We don't believe that was necessarily at all the intent when this was initially established, but this is just about site plan review approval for the Planning Board only, and has nothing to do with any other type of approvals for other types of water-related items, I think beyond the scope of Planning Board. Does that help? Okay.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Kate Wheeler, Harrison Street. Because so many of our Zone 1, our wells, are within surface, lying surface water areas that, you know, continue into Zone 2, is that something that you were concerned about? Because storage of chemicals within surface waters, you know, Zone 2 area, I mean, I would love to see, you know, the Planning Board take a look at every proposed project within a standing water area, and, you know, that's much farther out than 500 feet around those wells. I mean, I think almost every one of our municipal wells is surrounded by standing water, if I'm correct.
Further discussion? Okay, we'll proceed to vote. Article 25, we'll use ballot 17. Okay, the results of Article 24, the roosters, yes 32, no 99, blanks one, the article does not carry. Mr. Cranshaw.
I move to approve Article 26 as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Back in 2020, town meeting approved a community preservation project to study the possibility of irrigating front field at the high school. That authorization also said that any money not spent within three years has to be returned to the Community Preservation Fund. Well, the study's done. Unfortunately, it didn't quite get done on time, and a little bit of work was done after that three-year deadline. So what we're asking here is for you to approve this article to extend the deadline so we can make a final payment on the work done, and the final payment is in the amount of $2,000.
Discussion. Okay, this is a hand vote. All those in favor of this article, please raise your ballot. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion carries. Article 27 and 28. 27, Mr. Osseno.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to approve Article 27 as printed in the town warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Do I have a Planning Board recommendation?
Planning Board recommends.
Would you be kind enough to move Article 28?
I move to approve Article 28 as printed in the town warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Do I have a Planning Board recommendation?
Planning Board recommends.
Would you be kind enough to give your presentation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. May I ask if I could give the first presentation and then take questions on the first warrant article?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Article 25 is referring to what's called accessory dwelling units. Yes, sorry, 20. Thank you, thank you, everyone, 27. I can't even take credit for being that late of a night, this is actually going quite well, so I have no excuse. Article 27. It begins on page 31 of the town warrant that was handed out tonight. This change is simply designed to amend the zoning bylaws to update or modify the framework for accessory dwelling units to be consistent with the, with the current goals of the master plan and the housing production plan. So, accessory dwelling units, we already have zoning on this, and again, this is simply modifications and updates, but an accessory dwelling unit is a smaller independent residential dwelling that's, it's a unit that's located on the same lot as a single-family home, and it can be created through renovation or new construction. Each ADU is required to have a separate means of access, sleeping area, kitchen, and bathroom. The, the images you see are just simply different ways the, the configuration can be. You can have a basement ADU, a garage ADU, an attached or a detached ADU. These are just examples. So the purpose is really two things, broadly speaking. One, one is to help provide additional means for residences, including seniors, single-parents families, to remain in their homes, neighborhoods, and communities, and obtain extra income through the use of renting out an ADU, and it is also to develop, to develop a broader range of accessible and affording housing options in town, respecting the look and scale of the single-family dwelling in these neighborhoods. Here are some of the changes, and things are staying the same. The first one is that tenants, used, by the current regulations, tenants must be what's called blood relatives of the, of the owner, which we think is antiquated, so we're proposing to eliminate any type of need for a blood relative category. Simply, you can, you can rent out an ADU to anyone, that's just common rental market. You can live in the, the primary residence, or you can live in the accessory dwelling unit, or rent each other. We currently require that the zoning Board of Appeals is required for special permit. We would change that to a no, that we don't need to look at special permits for this. There's not much to really discuss. A lot of it's more on the compliance end with the, with, you know, with building code and things of that nature. Accessory dwelling units, for the current language, they're not allowed to be attached. We would propose, we're proposing that they can be detached. We would allow in any of the zoning districts that allow residential, we would limit the, the rental limit to 70% of the fair market value, and the thing that doesn't change is that owners must reside on the property. Another, a few things that also don't change, you know, the size is going to stay at 600 square feet for maximum size. There's certain building codes and setbacks that are not changing. Occupancy permits are required, and consistency with neighborhood characters has to remain the same. So one of the goals is about to increase affordability, so we're, we're looking to change this so that affordable housing will be limited to 70% of what's called the area fair market rent, so the area mean income, in a sense. And this is developed by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. So you can see here just in a couple of examples on what the fair market rent would be for, say, a one-bedroom. It'd be about $2,300, $2,400, and then you can see what the 70% rate of that would be. Next slide. A few other considerations. Owners must still reside on the, on the residence, on, in either the primary or, or the accessory unit. Temporary absences are allowed. You know, if people have to have, have services in some other place, they have military service, or if they're traveling for work for a long period of time, that, we're not trying to impact that at all. We're not, we will not allow short-term rentals or any type of Airbnb situation. Off-street parking's required for all the tenants, and this applies only to single-family homes in, in any of the zoning districts, particularly S1 and S2. And that's all I have.
Okay, any questions? I recognize the microphone to my left.
Robert Morell, 4 Guy Road in Maynard. The 70% restriction on fair market value for rentals, I believe people should vote against this on that basis alone.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Hi, Hope Davis, 1 Detling Road. I have two questions, can I ask two questions? About the 70%, sometimes I hear on the radio talk about towns having to go to get home rule approval for like rent control-type stuff. Is this an analog to that, or is there, is that required?
It probably is. I'm going to ask the town planner, Bill Numzer, to help with that question. You, you may need to repeat it for Bill.
Okay, I recognize the microphone to the left.
Hi, Bill Numzer, Planning Director. Could you repeat that again?
Yeah, sure, sure. I was just wondering if that 70% is analogous to things I've heard on the radio about having to go to the legislature to get home rule approval for like a rent control kind of program?
I think this was just to provide a standard for the use of an ADU as as a, to make sure that it was being used for filling an affordable gap. It was based on the, uh, national HUD numbers rather than, what we usually use are the, um, Boston area metropolitan statistical area.
But, but we're allowed to do that? We're allowed, the, the town can restrict how much someone can charge for rent?
Yes, in this case, because it's, it is a, um, going to be a bylaw that would be hopefully passed.
Got it, okay, thank you. And, can I ask my other question? I believe I read somewhere in the warrant that, that there was a special permit and it would be good for two years, and then you would have to have it looked at again, so is there the possibility that someone who's living in one of these could then be removed?
Uh, I, I believe, and I'll ask Bill to correct me afterwards, but I believe the current language requires, it does require a special permit that is renewed, I believe, every two years with the zoning board of appeals. Uh, we would be removing that requirement with the zoning bylaw. Did I get that correct?
That's correct. It's a, at this point, it's a discretionary permit.
Thank you.
I recognize the microphone to my left.
Thank you, Robert Morell, Maynard, Forghire Road. So, under the current, uh, bylaws right now, there is no restriction on what someone can charge for rent, is that correct?
I, yes, that is correct.
And under the past, uh, this, if this resolution passes, owners will only be able to charge 70% of that value, uh, that came from HUD?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Just, just so I understand what I'm voting for. Uh, it, it isn't what you could charge for rent, it's, it's getting the permission to have an ADU.
Well, along with the permission for the ADU would accompany, um, the requirement for the rental stipulation. Um, I, I think Bill Nemser could clarify further.
So, there wouldn't be any ADU under our current zoning?
Um, we have ADUs under our current zoning right now, um, because we do have a current bylaw for ADUs.
With those conditions?
Not with the rental conditions, that's correct. Um, and to just add a little color to this, um, the, the goal here is to help with, um, different, a variety of different housing options, and to help with some options that would be affordable. Uh, the goal here isn't to, um, to incentivize, um, making a lot of profit off of these units. Think of this more as someone who is aging, um, that wants to downsize, they can downsize to the ADU portion of the property, rent the primary residence, therefore being able to stay in their community, stay in town, and then, um, still generate income through their property itself. So that's really more of the vision here, um, and it's not to really set the incentives to, um, make a lot of profit particularly from afar. This is just to help members of the community stay in town.
Okay, um, recognize the microphone to my left.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kevin Stone, 17 Rice Road, speaking in personal capacity. I get the concern about economic freedom. However, on the balance, I believe that the article as written provides people more economic freedom than we already have. It may not be perfect, but I do not think we should let the perfect become the enemy of the good. I believe that we, by passing this bylaw tonight, we would increase people's economic freedom, and if we're concerned about the 70% rental restriction on these new units, uh, we could, we can amend the bylaw at a later town meeting. Thank you.
I recognize the microphone to the right.
Margaret Dyer, Patty Lane. I'm very confused. I'm a senior, so if I chose, or anyone else, a senior chose to do that, they're going to invest money to make the change. But they can't do it at fair market value? I don't really see that helping a senior. That's putting a Band-Aid on the problem.
I recognize the microphone to my left.
Thank you, Robert Morell, Forghire Road. I don't think the, this, I would, I would be in favor of this, except for that 70%. I don't like that, to me, that looks like the camel's nose in tent. I vote, I recommend that people vote against this.
Any other discussion? Okay, can you move on to your presentation for Article 28?
May I make, Mr. Moderator, Bill Nemser, planning director, I have a point of clarification may help in this, if I may. Uh, currently, under the regulations that we have right now, um, an ADU is a discretionary permit. That means that there, it's not a guarantee. And so, if somebody was to rent this property, rent an ADU now, it would have to be specified in that permit. What this, uh, proposed bylaw would do, would give a level of freedom to rent, uh, the unit, but it would be required to be at the 70%. So it would be a false equivalency to say, no, we're bringing, we're taking away a right that exists. Right now, it does not unless it's granted by a special discretionary permit by the planning board.
Thank you. I recognize the microphone to my left.
Ellen McManus, 11 Summit Street. Um, if I understand correctly, the 70% limit only applies to the rent of the ADU, and so if someone were to live in the ADU and rent their primary residence, they can rent that primary residence for whatever the market will pay them for, is that correct?
Um, I'm going to turn to either Bill Nemser or, um, a subcommittee member, remember, Bill Cran, you want to take that one, Bill?
Uh, yeah, Bill Cranshaw. I was part of the subcommittee that put this together, and that's absolutely true.
Thank you.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Uh, Bill Cranshaw, Mockingbird Lane, and just a clarification on some points. Today, you couldn't build an ADU and rent it out. You could only do it for a family member. You can't do it for a caretaker, you can't do it for a friend, you can't do it for a neighbor, you can't move into it and rent out your house, you can't do any of that. So, the equivalency here is sticking with the rules we got. All you can do is blood relatives, and you gotta go through the hassle of a special permit, or this initial step of expanding it, and maybe it's not fully expanded, but it's the first step. Thank you.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Lindsay McConkey, 52 Summer Street. I just want to echo what Bill was saying, that this current, this, this allows you to do something that you're currently not allowed to do, that makes more money for you. Uh, and then I have a clarifying question. Um, for anybody who is currently renting an ADU, um, and renting it at fair market value, would they have to reduce the amount that they're renting, or would they be grandfathered?
Uh, I'm gonna turn to Bill Nemser to help with that. Thank you, Bill.
I'd have to defer to town council, I believe that would fall under a grandfathering if it was in existence at the time the law was passed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Adam Costa, town council. I was getting worried I wasn't gonna be able to speak to some, tonight. [laughing] Um, uh, to the previous speaker's question, so, um, so yes, this is a proposed amendment to a zoning bylaw, and as a matter of state law, uh, any use that is in existence is grandfathered, protected under current provisions of state law as well as the provisions of your bylaw. So if you have an existing accessory dwelling unit that's in compliance with the current version of the bylaw, then you can remain in compliance with the current version of the bylaw presuming that your special permit doesn't have a date of expiration. If it expires and you have to come in for a new special permit under the current provisions, then you would be subject to the current provisions. But if you have a special permit that is in existence in perpetuity that runs with your property, uh, you could continue to play by the rules of the current bylaw, um, of course, with the limitations that, that go along with it. Thank you.
Okay, I recognize the microphone to my left.
Thank you. Uh, Robert Morell, Forghire Road. Uh, in my opinion, if the town was really interested in passing this type of legislation to keep people in town, they would pass this and liberalize, liberalize the requirements for getting a permit without the 70% stick.
So, to be clear, we, we're taking away the special permit requirement. This would be by right if they, if they comply with the zoning bylaw. There would be no special permit required if this passes.
That would be great. That's a, that's a laudable goal. I have a real problem with this 70%, 70% of, of market value and tying people to that. If the goal was really to keep people in the community by allowing them to build and do this, you wouldn't have that, in my opinion. Thank you.
Recognize the microphone to my left.
Hi, Julia Flannery, 112 Acton Street. Um, I asked the moderator to separate this vote from the combined vote of the next article.
Okay. As there are five people who would like this to be separated. Okay, we'll separate it. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll vote for Article 27.
Tina Wilson from 26 Espy Avenue. I, when I read this, I was actually pleased to see the 70% restriction, because I would not like everyone in my neighborhood to start putting in ADUs because they wanted to earn money. I'd rather my neighborhood had more single-family houses on their property than every single one having a little ADU so that you can earn lots of extra money.
Okay, so we will vote for Article 27, uh, using ballot number 18. Okay, before we proceed to 28, uh, the results of Article 25, which required a two-thirds vote, there were 19 no's, so times two is 38, so I have to have more than 38 to pass when we had 112, so the article carries. Okay, uh, Mr. Osseno.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to approve Article 28 as printed in the town.
You did, you did that already, you just gotta give your presentation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Article 28 is titled Powder Mill Overlay District in MBTA Communities. Uh, the purpose of this article is to create an overlay zoning district in what's, what's, I will explain is the Powder Mill Road Corridor Study Area, and this is to comply with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 20, uh, Chapter 40A, Section 3A, also known as, uh, MBTA Communities. So I'm gonna be talking about two different initiatives tonight. Um, one is the MBTA Communities Compliance, uh, which is the, the top here in orange, and the second, uh, item I will talk about is the Powder Mill Corridor Initiative. Uh, this was a master plan goal. Um, regarding the MBTA Communities, like I said, this is a compliance point, um, that we, every, that we are required to pass particular zoning on. Um, we're required to have at least one new zoning district that allows multifamily housing by right, um, and I'm gonna dig into this to a little deeper. The Powder Mill Corridor Initiative, um, was a study that we began back in 2020. This is a goal to help shape future development and revitalize the area on and adjacent to Powder Mill Road, and it's, um, the goal here is to, or, or the goal, the sort of vision here is to create an overlay district, um, that's designed to encourage more compact residential, um, mix of uses to help serve the community. So the, the goal here is, we're gonna use the Powder Mill Corridor Initiative in blue, um, to get our compliance point for the MBTA, um, Community Compliance, and we're gonna do this with the start of, uh, of an overlay district in the Powder Mill Corridor area. So, Chapter 40, Section A, uh, Section 3A, um, this is, requires 177 communities in eastern and central Massachusetts, uh, to comply by a, a new law that was passed by the state legislature. Uh, each community is required to, to, to create a by-right zoning district that is reasonably sized for multifamily housing, suitable for families and children with absolutely no age restrictions, and has a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre. Uh, here's a map of all the communities that are required to comply. Um, the ones in the dark blue are considered rapid transit communities, these are the ones that are closest to different types of MBTA, um, say, transit zones, um, subways, buses, um, rail lines. Um, the next tier down is community rail communities, you can see that, for example, the ones that are kind of branching out, those are the commuter rail lines. Um, the next tier down is adjacent communities in the sort of ugly yellow, um, and then the final tier down is, uh, s- small adjacent towns. Where the third tier down in the adjacent community, and you can see on the call-out map in the bottom right, that, that shows that Maynard is in the orange circle. So our compliance point needs to be finalized, um, by the end of this year. Um, we need to get ahead of that because there's many reasons why, but we want to pass this here tonight. Um, we are, as I said, dubbed an, an adjacent community, um, and our compliance point is to create a zoning district with sufficient land to create up to 474 units. Uh, the minimum area is 21 acres of total land, and we are required to have a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre. Uh, no more than 10% of those units can be designated as affordable, and income caps cannot be less than 80% of the area mean income. So, if town meeting allowed for questions, there'd be two good questions now. What is an overlay district, 'cause that's what I'm gonna talk about next, and then, what, what, where is this Powder Mill Corridor Study Area? Uh, so, an overlay district, uh, there's many definitions, but I thought this would be a good one for tonight. It, it's an optional zoning that's placed over or on top of existing base zoning, and it's used to incentivize development to align with different types of community goals. Some of these can be different use regulations or different types, types of housing options, different parking, different design guidelines. Uh, Maynard currently has two overlay districts in town. One is the downtown overlay district, which is, as you can probably imagine, in the downtown, that allows for mixed-use development, um, residents, residential units above, some commercial or retail property spaces down below. Um, developers that choose that path use the downtown overlay district regulations to get to that point. Um, the other overlay district that's well-known is Maynard Crossing, it's the Neighborhood Business Overlay District, the Market Basket Plaza. Um, everything that's built there was used, um, the developers used the overlay district regulations to do that build. They wouldn't have been allowed to do that build out without that overlay district. So, the, the goals of the Powder Mill Corridor Study, um, these are more the visionary points at, to support small businesses, affordability, river access, um, revitalization and new growth, and to improve the streetscapes and complete streets of the roadways. Here's a slide of project timeline, uh, for the Powder Mill Corridor Initiative. We started this, uh, as soon as the master plan was finalized in the fall of 2020. Um, in that winter, we started community forums and they continued on. You can see, if you go a little further down, um, winter of 2021, you have MBTA Community Law was established, so the community, the MBTA Community Law was established after we started the, um, Powder Mill Corridor Initiative. Uh, and that, and the, the, the different, um, touchpoints for the community continued all the way until this town meeting itself. So here's the Powder Mill Corridor Initiative Study Area. Uh, you can see the map on the left is a basic zoning, uh, street race map of Maynard. Um, the zoomed-in version shows the study area in the orange hatched. In the darker line that runs through, that's the Assabett River. This map, um, starts on the far left around Waltham Street Bridge, um, and then all the way towards the right side of the, the study area is the Stratus Property, um, uh, the r- the east side of, um, Route 62 Powder Mill, um, where it crosses into Acton. Um, so, now I'm gonna show you where the MBTA Community Subdistrict is gonna be located. Subdistrict is going to be located. So next slide. So this is our proposed subdistrict for our compliance point. It is, some will know it as the old Stratus Campus Property, or at least the vast majority encompasses the old Stratus property. It's listed as the Powder Mill Overlay District Subdistrict A, PMODA, and it's just, this is, so this is what our vote is on tonight. It's just this. Not the study area, but just the overlay district itself. And here's a zoomed-in version of it. You can see that the overlay district's being shown in the green hatched on this figure. It's directly behind Prime Storage, the indoor storage facility. Deer Run Hedge is just to the west. Powder Mill Road is just to the north of the overlay district, and so this, this is our vote. The vote here is to vote to put an overlay district in this area so that we can meet our compliance point with MBTA Communities. So why, so what are some of the important changes? Well, this would allow by-right residential use up to 17 units per acre. Additional uses are allowed, restaurants and retail businesses for sort of the mixed-use feel. There's different dimensional requirements in parking. For example, there's one change, a building height is, the maximum building height will be changed from 40 feet to 45 feet, so there's small changes of that nature. So what's staying the same? The base zoning remains intact. In this particular area, the base zoning is industrial. That remains the same. We're just putting an overlay district on this area. DPW approval would still be required for adequate utilities, just the same as any of, any development in town. Traffic mitigation would still be required, and site plan review by the planning board would still be required. So just to get a sense of what 17 units per acre looks like, here's a photo of Assabet Place. This is on just around 218 Main Street, just near the mobile gas station on the west side of town. This has 16 units on less than an acre. This works out to be about 20 units per acre density. This is Halsted, Maynard Crossing, behind the Market Basket. This is 180 units on eight acres. This works out to be about 20 units per acre. This is Sudbury Street Rowhouses, 10 units on about a third of an acre. This is about 27 units per acre. And this is 42 Summer Street, 24 units on about a half an acre. This works out to be 50 units per acre. So all of those are just to give you a sense of what 17 units per acre could be like, so you have some anchor reference to what it looks. So this is the slide. I'll leave it on to answer any questions. Again, our vote tonight is the overlay district.
Questions? Recognize the center microphone.
Asher Greenberg, 21 Woodridge Road. Could you just point out how close in reference the MBTA line actually is to this area?
So the, like an MBTA subway or a community rail?
Like the Acton, uh, community rail.
So South Station, Acton, South Station or West Concord?
What's the access from this area to an MBTA bus stop, commuter rail?
So tonight, we're not, obviously, we're not voting on that portion of, you know, we're not adding any transit here. I don't have an answer prepared for that question. We are complying with state law, and that's the goal. Reading into your question, you're probably like, why, if this is MBTA Communities, where are the transit connection points? Why aren't they there? Myself and town staff have a lot of the same questions, and we're really hoping that we can get some, some support and understanding on how the state intends to make these connections all the way to the different transit community points.
Does the state say to put this here?
We'd have to decide where we're going to put our compliance point in town. That is our requirement. Yeah.
I recognize the microphone to our other right.
George Yates, 13 Michael Road.
Please step into the microphone.
George Yates, 13 Michael Road. Is the, I was looking on the map online, and is all of that Stratus in Maynard, or is some of it in Concord too, or Acton?
So the whole, the whole district that we're voting on tonight is in the town of Maynard, all of it.
I think Concord is, West Concord's about four miles from that place.
The, you mean the train line?
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
I recognize the microphone to my left.
Maro Hogan, 50 Thompson Street. I'm wondering, the plan is to possibly build on this property, these units, and I'm wondering how that affects our water sewer that we're already at kind of maximum capacity.
It's a good question. So first, there are no plans to build here. The town has no plans. The town has no plans to build on any property that's not town property. The property owners could choose to build on this parcel of land based on the new zoning, or they could build on the land based on the current zoning. In either case, they would still need to go to DPW to receive approval of adequate utilities, and if adequate utilities, which DPW has made clear to us, there are not adequate utilities for that size, then there would be discussions on how the developer or the owner would be required to provide adequate utilities in some fashion.
Okay, thank you.
I recognize the center microphone.
Yes, Steve Dyer, Patty Lane. On the 20% affordable units, will veterans, current Maynard citizens, and legal U.S. naturalized citizens have preference on those units?
It's a good question. It's well beyond my scope. That ties to, it ties to something that's beyond the planning board's scope and to the Affordable Housing Trust. I'm going to try to get you an answer to that the best I can.
Yeah.
So just stand by. Bill Nemser, can we start with you to help answer that question as town planner?
Hi, Bill Nemser, Planning Director. We haven't gotten that far in this, with this legislation. Our current affordable housing requirements typically, on all the ones that we do, we have a local residence preference. As this went forward, I'm not sure if it would be consistent with the state legislation, but on our end as a town, we would, I assume, continue that policy of instituting a local preference for all our affordable units.
Local preference?
Yes.
Okay.
Town council would like to comment on whether, what is our requirement versus preferences and how that may be different than what our policies are as a town.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, so the answer to that is that local preference has been a hot topic in the Commonwealth for the better part of 10 or 15 years now. If some of you are familiar with the Chapter 40B Affordable Housing Law, many communities began 10, 15, 20 years ago instituting local preferences where current residents or even individuals that had children in the school system of a community would be provided a local preference. The Commonwealth has taken a careful look at that over recent years and determined that in some instances, the institution of a local preference is having a disparate impact on protected classes of individuals. And so what the state has currently said, and there's a policy in effect that says this, is that communities can adopt a local preference. The current standard is for up to 70% of the affordable units within a development, provided that that local preference is shown to not have that sort of an unfair or disparate impact on protected classes in the community. And there's a whole process by which if you had a general applicant pool and then a local preference pool, you would have to make adjustments to the two pools to account for any discriminatory effect that that might have on protected individuals. But otherwise, the state has said that a certain limited local preference is allowable.
So who has the final say? The Attorney General or?
So, so yes, I mean, typically, it's not the AG's office. It's the, what used to be known as the Department of Housing and Community Development. That's now the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. It's a state agency that sort of performs the same function that HUD performs at the federal level, and they oversee most of these affordability programs.
So by the passage of this, does that require special preferences, or the builder could, or could not choose it?
Mr. Moderator, it doesn't require a local preference. In fact, I think the state's, the state's preference would be that there not be one, but again, the state has recognized that municipalities would prefer to provide housing, if at all possible, to individuals that wish to remain in the community that might otherwise not be able to if there wasn't the ability to, to rehouse them in affordable housing units.
Thank you. I recognize the microphone to my right.
Thank you, Victoria Cudmore, 1 Dear Path, Unit 4. So on 39, page 39, it says the ability to create a minimum of 474 units without requiring special permitting from the planning board. So I'm assuming that it's a minimum number, but there could potentially be more, and I'm wondering if the Finance Committee or someone can speak to the possible impact of that kind of population increase on the town's services for security and school district, and what impact that might have.
First, can we answer the question about the 474 units and the minimum and maximum? Bill Nemser, would you mind helping me on this one? So the compliance point with the Commonwealth is a minimum of 474 units. That's based on population census data. Every town has their own number based on their own population census. This is ours, so that's the minimum that the state has given us. Now, we have, we have put into this bylaw certain restrictions that we're not, we're not allowing 1,000 units to be developed. I just don't recall the exact number and how we restricted it.
Yes, you're correct. The state has calculated that our fair share of this comes to 474 units, and anything, that's why we arrived at the 17 units per acre. That gave us approximately that number of units with the number of land, or the amount of land that we found available. The reason we had to have a little larger portion of land is because you're not able to count things like wetlands or unbuildable parcels or pieces that may be on there, so we had to account for that. So our estimate is that it would, the math should work out just about right, but we are obligated to have 474 units and a minimum of 21 acres zoned that's buildable.
Finance Committee, would you like to comment?
Yes. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
All right, great. So I direct you first to the last sentence of the Finance Committee comments. We believe that this article provides adequate control to allow Maynard to grow in a thoughtful manner financially beneficial to the town. I will elaborate on that. So first off, one of the key aspects of this is it still requires DPW approval for utilities. So there is concern about the water supply. If there's an inadequate water supply, DPW is not going to sign off on that. So there's the control to limit the number of units that go in, limited by the water supply. Now, there's some exceptions that, you know, DPW could say, yeah, the, we don't have enough water. The developer could choose to go ahead anyways, but they'd have to provide their own water supply, and DPW would have to sign off that they're providing adequate water. So there are controls there, so we're not overgrowing our supply. In addition, financially speaking, every town has a fixed cost regardless of the number of people in it, and if you're concerned about our tax rates, then the more people we have in town, the better, because that's more people to spread that fixed cost tax burden across.
I'd just like to comment. I think that's a very vague answer, and I do think that costs go up when you increase the number of children in your school. You need more teachers. You need more security when you have a bigger population. I'm not sure that that's necessarily true, that we're making more when we have more people come in. We have Maynard Crossing. Our tax rate has not dropped because of that. So I'm just wondering what effect we can expect as citizens and taxpayers in Maynard of increasing the residential population that by 474. That's, I would like to, I think people in this room would like to know that as well. You're asking us to vote on something, but also telling us we're required to have it. I think we have a right to know what we're to expect. Thank you.
I recognize the microphone to the left.
Sarah Measures, 17 Sunset. So we're also voting on a preamble to more districts, which I think come up for a vote in fall, right? And so I wanted to talk about the preamble a little bit. So I'm part of a group that's focused on Maynard's section of the River Assabet, in particular, on the Assabet becoming healthier, more biodiverse, and more accessible. So there's a line in the preamble which is particularly encouraging. It says, "Foster new development that protects and restores the riverbank." So I think this, this is very much in agreement with our agenda, so I'm very delighted to see that clause in there. So I'll be voting yes.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Gavin, 9 Cutting Drive. I wonder if you can emphasize for us, there's been a lot of media coverage on this requirement that's been set forth by the legislature, and I'm wondering if you could emphasize for us the, what is the ramifications of failure of a community to pass this particular, you know, zoning in a particular area in a town? We have been designated as a specific type of community that must do something. What is the ramifications of a failure of town meeting to approve this article?
Would town council like to respond to that?
I will, I will respond briefly and then ask for town council's support if I get something wrong. So this is a law that was passed by state legislature and signed by Charlie Baker four years ago, three years ago, actually. It, it requires all 177 communities to comply. Those that do not comply have been told that they will not receive certain types of funding and certain types of grants, particularly different types of roadway grants, different types of community grants. And if you, Greg, would you mind flipping one slide? We, we're, what is on the docket for us is either to comply, which I can explain in a minute why I absolutely think it's the right decision, but not compliance or failure to comply means that we're not going to receive Housing Choice Initiative grants, local capital project funds, mass work grants. We should also expect potentially even a notice of civil enforcement from the Attorney General's Office, who has recently filed a civil suit against the town of Milton for non-compliance back in February, and the governor's office has made clear that they are also considering how to restrict funding for both schools and roads and bridges. And these are documented statements from both the Attorney General and the governor's office. Now, that all said, this doesn't even, is not that even that relevant to me. This zoning bylaw is in line where we were headed with the Powder Mill Corridor Initiative. It is in line with our master plan. It is in line with our housing production plan. It also has the safeguards in place so that we're not going to get 474 units dropped on us without any restrictions. There, adequate utilities has to occur. Traffic mitigation has to occur. Site plan approval has to occur. The better, the best way I can say this, though, is that there's 177 communities out there. A lot of them are really struggling to find their compliance point. I mean, really struggling. And if you, if you pay attention to the news and you've watched their town meetings, there's some real struggles on how to find it. We are fortunate. We had, we had our, our compliance point in our back pocket already. It was something that we're already looking to do. It was, it was already part of our town initiatives. For us, we're fortunate. We're lucky that we have that. A lot of communities don't, and they're going to struggle to find their compliance. I don't think we are.
Does that answer your question, or do you still like?
No, I would follow up, if I may, Mr. Moderator, by saying specifically the mass works infrastructure grants that we have been reliant on and very lucky as a community works infrastructure grants that we have been reliant on and very lucky as a community to obtain a number of that have helped us on our infrastructure relative to water and sewer specifically. If we were to lose access to that, the future of Maynard is in extreme jeopardy because we need more water access, more sewer access. We need to upgrade, and we can't put it in out of our own taxpayers' revenue. We have to find other ways. We can't then fall into a situation where the state refuses to give us money because we failed a town meeting to vote in what they have asked us to do.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Central microphone.
Asher Greenberg, Twenty-One Woodbridge. I'm curious about, again, what happens if this doesn't pass. Is there a second location or different location that could be considered? I'm assuming, and I'd be happy to be corrected, that the intent behind the MBTA Communities Act is to give people access to MBTA. And if that, if we're just lumping something on to a zoning district because it's easy to be in compliance, then we're losing sight of the intent behind this act. And I'm wondering if this didn't pass, is there an option to continue to look for other locations?
We evaluated perhaps a dozen different options. By far, this is the best, and practically speaking, only realistic option available to us. If we don't pass this, we can't bring this back to town meeting again and try again. That's not how, that's not how votes work in the Commonwealth. We would need to go find a different compliance point. And it would have to be in the downtown, in a residential neighborhood district where we place an overlay district on. We're required to put an overlay district in town. So the other options we explored, from, at least I can speak for myself, were not conducive to the goals and objectives of the master plan, the housing production plan, and any of the good conversations I've been having in town. But this one does. This one aligns with those goals and objectives, and it stands out compared to all the other options that were available. Regarding the transit connection points, I completely agree with you. The intent here, for sure, is to connect people to transit points. Sometimes the egg comes before the chicken. And that might be the case here, and it's probably going to be the case for a lot of communities as well. Yeah.
I recognize.
So it's completely on my radar to ensure that we're, where the whole thing happens, right? Because we're not just putting a zoning district out into nowhere, right? It has to be thoughtful. From my point of view, this whole process has been very thoughtful. I will do my best to make sure that it continues to be thoughtful in that front.
I recognize the microphone to my left.
Hi, Jill Snyder, Five Harrison. I am new to Maynard. I just bought a house in Maynard in January, and I moved here in February. Before that, I lived in Arlington for fifteen years, and I was an Arlington Town Meeting member for thirteen of those years. And we had a representative town meeting. And I tried really hard to sort of hear the voices of my constituents in the town about how I was going to vote on this, on this issue. The MBTA Communities Act, I will tell you, was the most contentious issue that I came across in those thirteen years in town meeting. And so it was a real challenge. I heard things from people saying things like, yes, we want this to pass because we want, we want more housing. More housing lends, it lends itself to more stable housing prices. It lends itself to more affordable housing prices for people in the long run. We have to do this because we have to comply. Those are the reasons I heard why we should do it. The other side, I heard people was like, things like, you know, we really don't want the town to change that much, or things like, the only people that are going to really be rewarded from this are awarded in any way is the developers because they're going to make all the money. But one of the things I did hear a lot from people was that this was going to change the face of the town. In Arlington, let's be frank, now I've heard people talk about it's dense here. It is dense, but when you look at Arlington, the only choice they really had for the MBTA Communities Act was to build up on Mass Ave and Broadway. And in the end, that was going to literally change the face of the town. So when I read this, I thought, this is the perfect solution. You have a property. And I have to tell you, I drove up there the other day to that, you know, this, what do we, what's it called? The, what's the property we're talking about here?
It's a question, so I can answer it. It's a, it's called the old Stratus Campus.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the, I drove up there the other day. It looked like a place I would have gone drinking with my friends in high school. You, don't do that. But I'm just saying, like, the property itself, it, it was a missed opportunity, is what I'm saying. I just think it's a missed opportunity to not do this, and I just urge you to vote for this. Thanks.
Thank you. I recognize the microphone to my right.
Hi, Dave Hooton, Twenty-four Deer Edge Run, Unit Two. So I have one question. Could we flip back to the map?
Yes.
Okay. My understanding that the, 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 the former Stratus Camp, Campus, or what I like to call the cut through to, through the woods to Wendy's, is, no, no, the shaded area, the district. Yeah. Is, there's only very few property owners, perhaps just one, the company that owns the campus. What happens if the owner of the former campus decides not to do anything, not to build anything? Are we still on the hook for?
Are you done with your question?
Yes.
Okay. We are not on the hook if the property owner does nothing.
Okay.
We are only required to pass an overlay district with the compliant zoning.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay.
That property owner or owners could choose to use the overlay district zoning. They could choose to build on the base district zoning, or they could choose to do nothing.
Okay.
And we would be compliant and under all three of those scenarios. Does that help?
Yes. Also, your map scenario. The gray area between the Green Hatch and the yellow, that was acquired by Deer Edge Run a couple of years ago, so that should be yellow instead of gray.
It may very well have been purchased, but it doesn't mean that the zoning changed.
Okay.
Yeah. So duly noted, we'll check, but I think the zoning's correct, but I do recall the purchase you're referring to. It doesn't, I don't think it changed the zoning on it. Yeah.
I recognize the microphone to my left.
Yeah, Robert Morell, Four Guy Road. I heard a term used during the definition, in the discussion of the Powder Mill Overlay District, and it's a term, protected populations, I think. I've never heard it before. Could you define that in the context, what it is in the context of this?
So you asked about the term protected populations?
Yes, yeah.
I don't believe I used that term. Council did? Okay.
Maybe, yeah. I heard somebody, somebody use that term several times, and I didn't, I didn't really understand it.
I think it was in reference to a question about...
Preferences.
Preferences to housing. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think so, yeah. I'm just curious about what that term mean, you know, what it defines.
Sure. Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you, again, Adam Costa, Town Council. So there's a, there's a lengthy federal and state definition for protected classes. Generally, what it refers to in most instances, and how I've seen it apply in Massachusetts with respect to this concept of local preference, is racial and ethnic minorities. So if you live in a, in a community that has, that happens to have a very high Caucasian population, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent, and you're creating a, a local preference, well, inevitably, that local preference is going to have a, a composition similar to the composition of the community. And that would be, that would constitute, in the eyes of the state, discrimination against other classes, other racial minorities that might exist in the population as a whole and in the metropolitan statistical area that defines that, that, that income level to qualify for affordable housing. And so what the state does, and I talked before, without getting into too many details about different pools, a general pool and then a local preference pool, the state would look at your local preference pool and say, your local preference pool is ninety-seven percent Caucasian, whereas if you look at the statistical area surrounding you, it's only eighty percent Caucasian, and maybe you have the other twenty percent as a combination of other, other ethnicities. They would move individuals in those protected classes into the local preference pool to sort of even out the percentage, which might mean, would, would mean that there would be a certain number of individuals in the local preference pool that weren't actually, that wouldn't actually benefit from local preference because they'd artificially be put there, but they wouldn't be current residents of the community.
All right. Recognize the left microphone. Thank you, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Megan Zamudo, Fifty-Five Old Marlborough Road. I'd like to thank the Planning Board for their work in bringing this article to town meeting and for the robust public outreach process. I'm asking town meeting today to vote for this article because it's in alignment with our, with our values. It's consistent with our housing production plan, our master plan, our community development principles, and, as I mentioned, there was a robust public outreach process. Also, not moving this article comes at a price we can't afford. There's been a lot of talk about the grants that we wouldn't be able to apply for, and with the infrastructure we have in this community, it's very expensive, and we need all the help we can get from the Commonwealth to support our, our water and sewer infrastructure. Maynard has been very successful with grants in the past. We received a mass works grant not long ago. It's the reason that we are able to have our Maynard Crossing development, and I think that if there's one thing we can all agree on, it's that we love Market Basket. We really need to vote for this for, for many reasons. It's, it's aligned with our values, and to be reported in the Globe tomorrow would, would really be a tragedy. So thank you very much.
And last, I think we have sufficient discussion, so no more people at the microphone. You can stay. I recognize the center microphone.
Stephen Wagner, Thirteen Charles Street. I, I hope this passes. I, I am not certain whether anything actually will be built on that property. As a practical matter, we're mistaken if we think that South Acton is, for most people in Maynard, a place they are likely to walk to. The same is true for West Concord. This location is basically as close to West Concord as it is to South Acton. When we still had a local bus line that was supported by the town, having years before been supported by the state, it went not just to South Acton, you could also go to West Concord, Concord, Emerson Hospital. I opposed our getting rid of that when we got rid of it. I think sooner or later, we're going to need that as well as links to South Acton. The, the walk...
So I got to ask you to stay on topic.
All right. If you look at what Mr. Koenig wrote on his online commentary about what goes on in town, and I don't see him here tonight, he was arguing that this is a good place for rezoning in this way. It is, but as I wrote in reply to that, we have to bear in mind that for future transportation to commuter rail, we need to look in the direction of West Concord as well as to South Acton. It's, it's a matter of geography.
I recognize the microphone to my right.
Lindsay McConkey, Fifty-two Summer Street. I'm not sure exactly who this question is for, but maybe for you, maybe for the town administrator, but is it fair to say that if we did not vote for this this evening, and we then were out of compliance with what the state has required, and then the state did take action to withhold grant funding for infrastructure, for schools, for all of the things that have been noted this evening, is it fair to say that to cover that revenue shortfall, we then would likely eventually have to raise taxes? Is that how we would cover that shortfall?
It's definitely not a question I can answer. I will defer to others. Obviously, not anyone in the audience answered that question, but maybe the... Does anyone want to take that question?
Greg Johnson, Town Administrator. Depends on the project, depends on the scale. As, as, as you stated, and as others stated, we are highly reliant on state aid through grants, in other words. So I would say generally, yes. It would either fall on the taxes or the utilities if it was, depending on the infrastructure capital project, that it would be right. And we would not be able to do the amount of, like, large-scale capital projects we've been able to accomplish.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to vote now on Article Twenty-Eight using ballot nineteen. For Article Twenty-Seven. Article Twenty-Seven, because of special legislation in Massachusetts, only requires a majority vote as opposed to two-thirds, which is usually the case for zoning. So it had a hundred and ten yeses and nineteen nos, so it passed under the majority as well as two-thirds. So there's no question it passed. Thank you. Mr. Ossino, Article Twenty-Nine.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll move to approve Article Twenty-Nine as printed in the warrant. Accept the words to do or act thereon.
I have a Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends.
And Planning Board recommendation.
Planning Board recommends.
And your presentation.
So this is a zoning bylaw amendment, partly an amendment, but partly an addition. The purpose of this article is to regulate the location, design, security, safety, monitoring, and modifications of a firearms business or shooting range within the town of Maynard. Just a few sort of administrative procedures on this. So let me take a quick step back. Currently, there is no zoning in the town of Maynard regarding firearms businesses. So if a firearms business wanted to come to Maynard and open up, it's not really clear what type of zoning they, they would have to abide to. We're proposing to add zoning so that it's very clear what the regulations would be in town. And so if a applicant were to come to Maynard and ask for a, a use permit for, for a firearms dealership, they would first have to demonstrate that they hold a valid state license. They would have to apply and receive a special permit from the planning board, and they would have to provide a security plan to the Maynard Police Department for approval. Please note that firearms establishments and shooting ranges that are currently in town, no names being mentioned, would, would not have to abide by this process. They would be simply grandfathered in. So the special permit considerations are quite similar to how we would consider other special permits for uses in town. All, but specifically for this business, it would be all activities within, would have to occur within the enclosed building, no sales through drive-through or in the parking lot, no persons under eighteen allowed on the premise. Special permit would only be allowed if the applicant maintained compliance with the Massachusetts general laws. A special permit holder must provide the planning board with an annual update, which is similar to how we do, what we do with other businesses in town. Special permits are not transferable, and it's only granted for principal use, not an accessory use to a property. Spacing requirements, businesses are not to be located within... Spacing requirements, businesses are not to be located within 300 feet of any pre-existing school, childcare center, playground, or athletic fields, and not located within 150 feet of another firearms business or shooting range. So, where is the special permit allowed? For firearms, so this is a table showing, that will be added to these zoning bylaws. It shows that for firearms businesses, it would be allowed by special permit with the Planning Board in the business district, the central business district, the healthcare industrial district, and the industrial districts. And the same thing for shooting ranges, outdoor, indoor shooting ranges, that is. Outdoor shooting ranges would not be allowed. All of the uses would be, have to come through, again, Planning Board for special permit. For this bylaw that we're passing tonight, it would also update some of the definitions. So, new definitions would be for firearms accessory, firearms business, shooting range indoor, shooting range outdoor, and we'd be updating the definition for manufacturing light. And that, that's what I have for tonight.
Discussion. Okay, there being no discussion, then Article 29, we will vote using ballot number 20. All right, so before we go to Article 30, the results of Article 28. This was also a majority vote, unlike requirements for two-thirds because of the special legislation by Massachusetts. Those in favor, 120. Those no, five. So, it passed under either criterion. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, move to approve Article 30 as printed in the warrant, except the words "to do or act thereon."
Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends.
Thank you.
And this is about the town ambulance. It's the fourth payment in a five-year plan to lease purchase, to lease purchase an ambulance. And this is the third payment in a seven-year plan to lease purchase a fire truck. And this uses funds from ambulance fees to lease a new ambulance, which is expected to take two to three years to, to acquire. So, we have an older ambulance that was acquired in about 2010, and so, obviously, that's probably going to reach the end of its life. And so, this is about getting a, a head start on a new one, which does take two to three years to acquire, so that's why we need the funds now.
Discussion. Okay, there being no discussion, this is a hand vote. All those in favor of this article, please raise your ballot. Thank you. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Article 31.
Thank you. And this is all so about the, the lease to purchase ambulance. Move to approve Article 31 as printed in the warrant, except for the words "to do or act thereon."
Do I have a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends. And in accordance with state law requiring town meeting authorization to enter lease purchasing agreements, this article allows for the lease purchase of a new ambulance as funded by the previous article.
Discussion. All those in favor of this article, please raise your ballot. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. And the results of Article 29, which requires a two-thirds vote, we had nine no votes. By double nine, that's 18, so I have to have more than 18 yeses, and that is 106. The motion carries. Before we end the meeting, I want to thank WAVM students who did a fantastic job here with the audio and student. Also like to thank the ballot collectors here who did a wonderful job. And I'd like to thank you all for coming this evening and participating in democracy.
So, thank Justine St. John for her service, because this is her last town meeting as a member of the Select Board. So, so I will continue. Bill Coleman, Howard Road. Mr. Moderator, I move that this meeting be dissolved.
All those in favor? Thank you all. Have a good evening.